Good evening, everybody. I'm going to call the April 6, 2017 meeting of North Andover School Committee back to order. We've been in executive session since 6:15. Our first order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance, so I'd invite everyone to rise, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I remind everyone we're being recorded tonight, and if anyone could silence their mobile devices, that would be much appreciated. Before we get to our first order of business, I just want to welcome Helen Picard and Holly Lynch to the board. Congratulations on your election. We look forward to serving both of you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yay. Okay. So, first order of business is election of a vice chair and reorganization of our board liaisons. I would welcome nominations for vice chair of the North Andover School Committee at this point.
I will nominate Amy Mable.
Nominated by Mr. McDevitt. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Seconded by Holly Lynch. Any other nominations? Seeing none, I'll close nominations now. There's been a nomination of Ms. Mabley to become vice chair of the North Andover School Committee for the rest of this fiscal year. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Aye?
Sure.
That sounded like a reluctant aye.
Yeah, yeah.
That's exciting.
It sounds like that was your unanimous vote. Congratulations, Ms. Mabley.
Thank you, sir. There's a public, too.
And since Ms. Mabley is now the vice chair, there's a vacancy for the position of clerk.
Ooh. I'm taking my last notes.
I'll accept nominations for the position of clerk for the North Andover School Committee.
I'd like to nominate Holly.
Nomination by Ms. Picard for Ms. Holly Lynch to be clerk of the board.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. McDevitt. Are there any other nominations?
No, sir.
Seeing none, I would close nominations. So, we have one nomination to elect Holly Lynch clerk of the school committee. Motion made by Ms. Picard, seconded by Mr. McDevitt. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. It is unanimous. Congratulations, Ms. Lynch. Rising fast. Four minutes, and you're already in power position. Way to go. Okay, so that's complete. The next order of business is the liaison appointments, and I'm going to just quickly pass these out here, and I will post these afterwards. I'm sorry. These from this way. One, two, three, over there. I want you to put those that way. Obviously, with the retirement of Mr. Gross and Mr. -- not retirement. We're going to call it semi-retirement because I think you're going to be here quite a bit. I'm just going to read these off, and these are the proposed appointments for the rest of this fiscal year that goes to June 30. But our subcommittees for legal affairs would be Holly Lynch. Continue negotiations with the teachers with Mr. McDevitt. Negotiations with teaching assistants, Ms. Holly Lynch. Policy, continue to be Ms. Mabley. The school building subcommittee would be appointed after town meeting, hopefully. Liaisons, the BRC liaison would be Ms. Picard. Budget communication would be myself and Ms. Mabley. Quest representative would be Helen Picard. Legislative liaison would be myself. The North Andover Foundation of Education would continue to be Mr. McDevitt. Liaison to the PTO presence would be Ms. Mabley. And for the wellness committee would be Ms. Picard. We also have Ms. Mabley serving on the Hayes Field Subcommittee as well. And just for the edification of people, the chair, myself, and the superintendent are ex officios of all these subcommittees, so there's a lot going on there. So, those are the liaisons. Are there any questions about these? Concerns? Anyone want to beg out? No? What was it? Good. I would accept a motion to appoint, as I presented.
Second.
No, I'm not making the motion. I need a motion. Moved by Ms. Mabley, seconded by Ms. Lynch. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That's a five-vote vote. Congratulations, everybody. I appreciate everyone's willingness to volunteer. There's a lot of time commitments outside of this that, you know, you have to give a lot of time away from your families and whatnot, so I thank you for that. All right, so, moving along. Public comment. Anyone in the audience? Okay. Seeing none. Recognition. First order is Courtney Ahern, or is Courtney here?
Courtney, would you come up to the microphone, please? Do you want to say a few words about this person? Okay. We have in front of you the amazing Courtney Ahern. The much fought-after, sought-after librarian at the elementary level, who last year, if you remember, was in five different schools. And then this year is in two, is at Thompson and at Sargent. I will say much to the chagrin of the other three. And Courtney was nominated by actually Laura Herrenting, our high school librarian, for an award. And I'm just going to read a little bit from the letter that came to me from Amy Short and Ann Purim from the Massachusetts School Library Association about Courtney. And she received this very prestigious award. So, "It is our privilege to inform you that the Massachusetts School Library Association has named Courtney Ahern, school librarian at Sargent and Thompson Elementary Schools in North Andover, to receive the 2017 President's Award. This award honors an MSLA member who is in a career of one to five years, has made a significant impact on student learning through a quality school library program. Specifically," they talked about, "Courtney has taken on many ambitious and successful endeavors during her first year. She continuously supported STEAM with the Hour of Code in co-coordinating the North Andover Public Schools' elementary poetry contest. She also worked closely with the public library in a number of pursuits, including the National Read-a-Thon. She expanded students' horizons through green screens and a lead of virtual field trips through the San Diego Zoo." And I have to tell you, that's just a few of the things that Ms. Ahern has done. So, we're very excited and honored to recognize this very impressive honor, Courtney. And we really just cannot think of a better person who has really reinvigorated our libraries and our elementary schools. It's really our ability to bring the libraries back to what they have is a true testament to you.
Oh, thank you very much. I think it's more a testament to the environment that the North Andover Public Schools have really fostered over the last couple of years, and especially with the addition of Dr. Price. But I'm glad that the work that we're doing in the library is getting recognized, especially at the middle school and the high school level. I think everything that the library media specialists are doing is really kind of helping, as you say, revitalize the library program. And the teachers and the students and just North Andover in general has been very supportive, so, thank you.
Thank you. Courtney, we have a certificate of recognition that I'd like to read at this point, and then I'm sure Ms. Price and Mr. Gilligan would like to get a photo op to tweet away. The North Andover School Committee certificate of recognition presented to Courtney Ahern, Massachusetts School Library Association, 2017 President's Award. This award honors an MSLA member who, in a career of one to five years, has made a significant impact on student learning through a quality school library program, given this day, April 6, 2017, by myself, David Teresi, Chair, and Dr. Jennifer Price, Superintendent of Schools. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Chair, Teresi.
No, we're the both of us.
Yeah, I tweeted to make sure you were.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, great. Next order of business is student report. Courtney or Cole?
Courtney.
Where's Courtney?
Courtney.
Courtney, we always count on Courtney.
Maybe the cross munches mess.
Stan, you want to give a report, maybe?
I'm a little old for that. Appreciate it.
Okay. Consent agenda, approval of minutes from March 23, 2017. Do I have a motion to accept the minutes as presented in the packet?
So, moved.
Moved by Ms. McDevitt, seconded by -- seconded by Ms. Mabley. Any further discussion? I'd imagine our two new members who weren't here would probably be voting present or abstaining. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Ms. Lynch?
Abstained.
Ms. Picard?
Present.
Present as well. So, that's a three-vote vote with two abstentions. Okay. Thank you. I'm sorry, I got two agendas here. We flipped it over. Next order of business is acceptance of a donation of an automated external DFIB. Any discussion on this one?
I can turn it over to Mr. Gilligan.
Sure.
I have some information. It's Michael Callahan.
Michael is here. We're very fortunate. Michael Callahan is donating a defibrillator to us here, an AED here at North Andover High School, in the name of his sister, Kristen M. Callahan, who in 1999, in his last days as a junior in high school, died from a condition called hypertrophic cardiomyopathy. And he's North Andover resident with two young children, and he has donated to the athletic complex here at our high school, but he's also outfitted, I think, 12 schools in North Reading as well.
Defibrillator, too.
Yeah. 12 defibrillators at the schools. So, I can't say how grateful we are to be able to accept this very generous donation in the name of your sister, and we truly appreciate it. So, on behalf of the high school principal, who couldn't be here tonight, wanted to thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Callahan. Do I hear a motion to accept the donation as presented in the packet?
It's moved.
Moved by Ms. Mabley, seconded by --
I'll second it.
-- seconded by Mr. McDevitt. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, none. It's a five-vote vote as well.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I believe it's welcome to North Andover, correct?
What's that?
Have you -- are you new in North Andover?
I've actually been here 12 years.
Okay. So, I apologize.
That's new. Rosemary, is that new?
No, not right now.
That's new.
And you have two young ones not in school yet?
Three and a half in a little while.
Oh, boy. So, you're busy at home.
Not yet.
No wonder you're here.
Okay. Next order of business is chairs' report. There's a couple items on here. I'm just going to take B first. B, very simply, on May 4, due to, was it the teacher's retirement?
Teacher's retirement.
Yeah. We're going to start a meeting on May 4 at 6:00 PM, just giving the members plenty of time for that. I also want to recognize our own Superintendent, Dr. Price, for receiving a very special award this past Sunday down in Newton that some of us were able to attend, honoring Dr. Price as well as the mayor of Newton, Sadi Warren, for their efforts with our Standing Our Differences program. I think, and I'm going to ask Ms. Lynch to say her first words in a second about that program, but it was a very moving tribute, I think, not only for you, but just hearing some of the stories. I was very happy to attend, and I think it's quite an honor for you to receive. So, I know it's been, you brought that program to North Andover, and Ms. Lynch has been very active in that, and do you want to say a couple words on that?
It's a great program. We've been really successful in all the schools. We've been to every elementary school multiple times, and the feedback we have gotten has been overwhelmingly positive. The students like it, the teachers like it, the principals like it, and we have so many parent volunteers, which we could never have run the program without the parent volunteers. So, it's, we're very fortunate, and it's been very well received.
So, thank you and congratulations, Dr. Price. I don't know if you're going to mention this in your superintendent's report, but I want to mention, because I know Sleckman Smidely and Sleckman Keen are here as well, but the statement of interest that the Sleckmans so kindly, and especially Ms. Smidely, who read the motion. As Mr. McDevitt --
By the glasses.
Yes. It was a long, painful motion, but it was a requirement of the SOI, the Statement of Interest for the North Andover Middle School. That has been completed. It's been signed, and Mr. Smidely will be driving that to Boston first thing tomorrow morning, I'm sure. Maybe after traffic subsides.
Exactly.
Right. Right. But no, we are appreciative, so thank you very much for that. And the last thing I want to talk about really quickly is the Educator Hall of Fame nomination deadlines. One of our previous meetings, we were discussing this. Normally, this time of year is the deadline because we've honored that person in the spring or early summer. We've since moved that presentation last year, I think it was the end of October, if I recall correctly, and we did that in conjunction with honoring teachers who reached professional teacher status. It was a nice ceremony. So, we have some time to play with, but I think that the last time we had a conversation about this, we were thinking of maybe changing some of the criteria, and I just wanted to have a real quick discussion with the members about how they wanted to proceed with that, that criteria. I think, I think that the conversation, if I recall correctly, was about including administrators in that as well. I know we've had at least one person raise some interest in nominating a person known in North Andover as an administrator. So, with that, maybe I'll go to our senior member of the delegation to kick off that conversation.
I still look to stand. So, what happened about a year and a half ago, or no, about a year, when we went through the process, we didn't really feel a couple of things, that the way that we decided on and presented the candidates was really kind of open. And so, you know, the vice chairman of the committee gets all of the applications and then makes a recommendation, and then the other names, if they're included or not, they're, they kind of, there was a conversation about whether or not they felt like they didn't win, right? So, did we want to change that process to make it, you know, a little bit of a committee that kind of established that and then picked the criteria, or picked the educator? And then the other piece was really that the policy specifically states that it's a teacher. And so, there was, there's been concern, or interest, I should say, that not all of the people who educate our children are necessarily teachers, but they can be administrators as well. And so, the ability for us to include some, open the doorway a little bit more with that as well. And I think if I understand correctly, anybody who is a coach would be considered with the Athletic Hall of Fame. So, this would really be kind of the administrators and actual teachers kind of in the classroom. So, that was really kind of where the conversation ended.
Okay. So, my thoughts are this. We have a person who's our policy person.
Yes.
I thought it may be good for us to have a subcommittee put together to look at this one specific policy. And like, because the deadline is probably extended, I think we could actually extend the deadline, and again, I'd like some feedback, but I think we could extend it several months. I don't think we're in a huge rush to get this out the door, because if we're going to include educators, I'm sorry, include administrators as well as educators, we should let the public know that that's going to exist now. But we do have our policy where we have to have a first reading and a second reading. It'd be nice if, and I hate to put the onus on you, Ms. Mabley, but if you could get us a first reading for April 27th, our next meeting, so we can vote on it May 4. I think that's the process that I would like to see. I don't know if there's any other feedback on that, but I'd kind of like to use that guideline so that we could just hold that open until then.
Sounds good.
And I'm happy to work with you on the wording of that, too.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So, Ms. Mabley and Ms. McDevitt will get together, and on April 27th, we'll have a draft of a new proposal for that. And like I said, we're going to probably do the same timeline, Dr. Price?
Yes.
Late October to honor this person. So, I do think we have time to get it done. Please.
If you, it's the school committee, subcommittee, but I'd be happy to help as someone who's been kind of consistently here in different roles over the years. A lot of the former retirees, they don't know anyone in the office, and they call me to ask about the different policies. So, I have a lot of, I've been collecting some feedback on some of their ideas, particularly around administrators. I just met with someone the other day. So, if you'd like, I'd be happy to join you for one meeting, give you that feedback.
Sounds great.
So, we can use your office?
Yes.
I will let you know that the flaps have been brought in and have been installed.
Excellent.
Thank you. That's good.
Okay, so we're agreed on that? That timeline sounds good for everybody?
Yes.
Fantastic. Okay, that's my chairs' report and discussion time. So, next order of business, superintendent's report.
Yeah, just three things. One of them long, two of them quick. We received a donation that doesn't meet the $1,000 threshold that I really wanted to talk to you about. We received a donation for $524.55 from the North Andover Middle School, and it was actually money that the kids raised from PJ Day and Hat Day, so they paid in order to be able to wear pajamas and hats, and they donated that for the Model Classroom Initiative. Thought that was pretty cool that the middle school kids were raising money. Obviously, this is something that's resonating with them, so I just wanted to acknowledge that, although we don't have to vote it. Next, Mr. Smidely and I, along with Mr. Santilli, have been involved in interviews for the owners' projects managers for the kindergarten building, so I just want to let you know that we are proceeding there. We hope to have an OPM onboard in the next week or so, which is from the funding that was approved from last year's town meeting. So, I just want to let you know, we're moving along with hopefully a positive vote on May 16. We will be ready to go. So, we had, we interviewed four firms after reviewing eight applicants, so we're moving in the direction of being able to appoint someone. Did I miss anything on that, Mr. Smidely? Okay. And the last is actually a bit more in-depth, so if you would take a moment here. Chairman Teresi and I talked a little about it, but just talking about this, we will make this an official school committee agenda item at our next meeting. But as you know, and I'm confident the candidates know, since you guys spent so much time in our meetings, so --
They're not candidates anymore.
That's right. When they were candidates, they knew. The new accumers. Is, we have approved three budget positions at the elementary level for next year. And so, Mr. Gilligan and I met with all five elementary school principals for about two hours on when, yesterday, to look at where we would allocate those positions. And so, as you will see, we identified six places where class sizes are just projected for next year above where we would want them to be. I'm going to talk first about Franklin. So, you'll see at Franklin, and I apologize, I purposely, we're going to keep this kind of quiet for a moment. You can come see. I'm more than happy to have you look at this, but projecting it, I feel bad for the audience, but, Mr. Smidely, maybe you can give --
This will be linked.
This will be linked. We will link this. We will link this. I apologize, I didn't do from some beforehand. I apologize for that.
We need a model.
We need a document camera. I apologize.
Model school committee room.
Yeah, 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 yeah. What? Yeah, sure. Go ahead. I apologize, I did not think about that. It's great to have an audience.
This is a rarity.
So, that being said, so, at Franklin, we actually have two classes next year that are going to be high, 26.6, 26. That happens at Franklin, is we have classes going from three, we have three in some grades, four in the other, that we're used to that bubble situation. And you will see in first and second and fifth grade, those class sizes are a little lower. And so, we will do some reallocation at Franklin to be able to address those two high class sizes. That's normal at Franklin. I will say, in talking with Mr. Clark today, there is some thought, and this is quite radical here in the North Andover Public Schools, of maybe doing a one-two and actually having a combined grade level, which would allow us to really have class sizes across the board at Franklin. Many districts do that. I have to say, I had a kid in a K-1 for two years. It was a wonderful experience for my own kid. You do that with opt-out for parents. No parent is ever forced to do that, but it's something to consider as you're really trying to think about thoughtful class sizes. And it's something that really works, especially in the kind of the K-2 window for kids. Past that, it gets a little harder, but that's something that they're considering at Franklin. So, I am pretty confident that at Franklin, we can handle those two larger class sizes within Franklin, not allocating any more teachers to Franklin. The plate, yes?
Are there any? I'm assuming all classrooms are full.
So, if, yeah, at Franklin, we would not be adding any additional teachers, so that, but I'll go to the other schools.
Because sometimes there's a bubble room.
Yes.
Right, okay.
There is actually one space at Franklin we could add an additional classroom to, but the numbers would not necessitate adding a teacher at Franklin.
Okay.
So, Franklin kind of takes care of itself, which leaves us four additional very large class sizes, and I know many of you have heard about these. The next year's fifth grade at Atkinson, I think many have heard about that concern. It currently is 27, 28 kids, and our thought is to, if we could add a third there, that number becomes much more doable, right? So, I'm sorry, if we had a fourth, it goes down to 21. That's a significant change, right? So, we would be adding one there. Fifth, if you look at Kittredge, Kittredge really does not have the space to add more than one classroom, and by adding the space at Kittredge, you would actually having to be moving the music and art room for a year, which the principals are willing to do for a year, given that the kindergarten complex, right? So, the idea here is, talking to Mr. Cushing, his current third grade going into fourth has a number of our students from the TIP program. It is a class that he feels very strongly we could make that three rather than two, and that would have a significant impact on the school. And then if you look down at Thompson, next year's second grade and next year's fourth grade would be quite large. If, you know, obviously, there's some pressure to say, okay, at third grade, you only have 18. We have already heard from those parents who are currently second graders at Thompson. We heard again from them last night, Ms. Mabley. That we've heard about it all year. So, we feel strongly we need to add an additional two sections at Thompson, and they feel that they could handle that with the space in terms of their computer lab, and they have a special-edged classroom that they could make into a full classroom. At Atkinson, we would probably have to consider moving one of our K classes over to the ECC, and there is one empty ECC classroom for a year, which makes some sense, because there's going to be a K at the ECC the following year. There's really just no room at Atkinson. So, as you can see here, we spent quite a lot of time yesterday and feel that, given these numbers, we would like to add four classroom teachers rather than three. And of course, we tried to figure out how to get down to three. I think that's fair, Mr. Gilligan. We worked on this, but it would really be difficult to get down to three. So, the principals have proposed, and I will bring this as a formal proposal, to actually take some of their building supply lines for one year only, and each contribute a portion of that to pay an additional teacher salary. I've checked with the town manager and said this would be an additional benefits, and he said, Jen, I really understand we're moving towards having more elementary classroom teachers. One reason we feel we might be able to do this is that the district is now going to be buying the math resources through the Medicaid funding, so that that allows us to take some of the funds that the principals have used for that in the past. It's a one-year deal. They can, you know, recoup those funds the following year. This is not us thinking this is a permanent solution, but they all felt so strongly, and even schools like Ed Foster feels very strongly about this, that even though he's not getting an additional teacher, we all understand that the goal of reducing class sizes across the district is something we all buy into, so we're willing to give a portion of their building supply line. It's around $10,000 a person, a school, a little bit more for the bigger schools, a little bit less for the smaller schools, proportional. So, that is something that I'm going to be coming forward with for you guys, is to talk about adding a fourth teacher by using those building supply budgets. And I just wanted to preview with you with that, because we're going to start going on and trying to hire and post some of these positions. We obviously won't fill until anything's approved, but I just wanted to let you know.
For those at home who can't see this, Dr. Price is referencing, especially the Thompson School, the projection for grade two next year is an average thirty-two kids per classroom, and the fourth grade's thirty-six kids per classroom.
If we don't add.
If we don't, if we don't do anything. That's amazing. My question would be, maybe it's to Mr. Mealy, how do you project? I know it says here at the bottom, the kindergarten enrollments are always changing, but that one at Thompson is exceptionally low right now.
Let Mr. Gilligan answer that.
Okay. I asked for you first, just for the record. For the record.
At this point, we're beyond projections. We've got enrollment.
So one of the key things that I work on every year is out-of-neighborhood requests. So it actually helps us balance these out, people that might be assigned to Sergeant one of our Frankland. And it's a year-to-year request. What I would say that makes me slightly anxious at the Thompson with those ten is that until we move into the kindergarten complex, in past, Thompson, for whatever particular reason, has some later enrollments. I don't know if it's a demographic issue, but.
It's a timing thing.
It's a timing when people move into, you know, there's a lot of rentals down there, Marblehead, Middlesex, Beverly. So I don't know if those run to July one or whatnot. But the biggest key about Thompson is you have to remember when you start to look at the Atkinson School. So if the Atkinson's already at twenty-two, when we typically have to designate at least one area that's an overflow for kindergarten, and Thompson and Atkinson, for the most part, were able to provide the transportation if we do an involuntary transfer, which is required of us. If we eliminated that at Thompson and we had a move out at Atkinson, a kid who lives down, you know, close to the 495 at Mass Ave, it's really tricky for us in terms of transportation to get that kid to Franklin or Sergeant or even Kittredge, depending on the bus routes. So we keep a close eye on this, and I'm not saying that this couldn't shift, but I wouldn't be surprised by September one that Thompson was at twenty or twenty-one in those kindergarten classes.
Interesting.
However, the reason we put those italics and I put that red there is that we really haven't spent the time looking at those numbers yet. So we may reallocate one of the fifteen K classes to a different place if we can make it work. But we are so unsure of those numbers. The rest of these numbers we're pretty sure about because there are kids in our school currently. And so K is just always harder to predict.
Sure, absolutely. And that's not for a lack of effort on Judy's part with the census on preschools. The outreach has been tremendous to try to figure out what's coming in.
Are we consistent this year over last year from the kindergarten perspective? I mean, are we?
Yeah, so last year at this time, we should have only had two Thompson Kindergartens. And you'll notice that there are now sixty-five kids in the Thompson K. So that would have been a real problem if we had only had two.
Right.
So just so you know the kind of work we're doing and what lies ahead, I know we're getting a lot of questions about these, especially some of these larger class sizes and concerns. And, you know, I think the principals are being very creative in thinking about how for a one-year interim, we could make this work in our schools to really try to decrease class sizes across the board. I think we are all buying into that as a goal.
And just to clarify, for looking at Thompson, that second grade number of thirty-two is right now first grade, there are three.
Correct.
And that's why.
That's why you're adding.
We're not dealing with thirty-two kids in second grade, right?
Correct, we're not.
First grade right now.
So what we did is we did not move the number of classrooms per grade that we currently have.
Right.
So that's just important. So you'll notice that, but conversely, the second grade at Thompson right now is only two.
Right.
Out of fifty-five, so that's why we're at twenty-seven and twenty-eight. We're proposing three.
Right.
Does that make?
Yes, exactly, just make sure people understood that.
You also just mentioned about when you would be posting this. And so I know in the past, we've had particularly high number of applicants for positions that are here. What's kind of the timeline from an education, like when people start posting for jobs and when does that fallish?
Now.
Okay.
So I actually will tell you, I have an email drafted out to the, all the elementary school staff after this conversation. If I was getting at least a favorable nod from you guys, this is something I should be doing. And that we would actually be posting the positions. You post now, but we would not obviously hire until after town meeting. But that's about right. We have, we have April break coming up. There's no way we will be ready to make a final recommendation before town meeting. So now is the time to post teacher positions. The better districts are posting now.
That's what I wanted to know.
We have already started to post positions that we know of already. And in some cases, administrative mostly, we've started to hire, but people are starting to get teacher hiring committees together also. So, you know, we post anticipated openings if they're town meeting dependent.
Okay.
So the bottom line is the money for the person's salaries are in the budget, but the benefits, you talked to the town manager about, and he's confident he can absorb that.
Correct. He understands this is where we're headed. And we would just need some reallocation within the budget, and I would need your approval to do that, so.
Can we put the questions on issue? Obviously, we'll take a vote on the twenty-seventh for that.
So we have six classrooms that are targeted here as being higher, but only four positions?
Yes, because what we're going to do at Franklin is we're going to.
Given those lower class sizes, we're going to reallocate. So Franklin is basically going to take care of itself.
Okay.
And I've talked extensively with Mr. Clark about that. He understands that, you know, and so Franklin's going to take care of itself.
Okay.
And that makes sense, actually. I mean, I think if push came to shove, we would have to pull a classroom from Franklin to deal with the other ones because they're just so big. And so I think in the end, he feels like by pulling a fifth and moving it down to a third, and then by maybe combining a one-two and moving that to a four, he can take care of that. Does that make sense?
Yep.
Okay. We'll take a vote on that in our next meeting.
Thank you for looking at this now.
Anthony Ellison Superintendent's report.
That's it, thank you very much.
That's it? Okay. Next, our business is the middle schools fields committee presentation. I'll defer to our ever-capable representative on that, Ms. Mably.
Yes, I'd like to invite my colleague to the table, Mr. Rick Green. Also, we have another committee member, Ms. Smedele as well, if you want to come up. And Mr. Green has some nice, big-size maps as well, right? You're so kind. I have it memorized, so I'm good.
You should have a couple of copies.
I know. So you can see it even more easily.
Mr. Green, maybe after you pass those out for the edification of the public, maybe describe how the committee came together, how long ago you were. Maybe Ms. Smedele can do that.
He's very good at giving the background.
Because I'm sure a lot of people don't realize how long this has been going on for.
What I was going to do is I can agree this.
Sure, absolutely.
Here, Rick, I can pass them up.
Welcome.
Thank you very much. As Amy said, my name is Rick Green. I'm representing the Middle School Fields Improvement Committee. So what I'd like to do is I'd just like to give you a brief history as to how we came about where we are with the plan in front of you right now. Originally, there was a committee that was formed before this committee was appointed by the selectmen. Mr. Mealy sat on the committee as well as Andrew Mailer, Bruce Thibodeau, myself, Terry Holland. And what we did is we developed a scope of work for, put out to a consultant to provide us a, basically a price to start the preliminary design on this project. And the goal of this project is to, let's say, improve the middle schools fields. As you see it now, they're somewhat underutilized, some of the areas are in rough shape, specifically the Hay Stadium, the track. So what we did is, as the first committee, is we went through preliminary design concepts. And the consultant is Waterfield Design Group, who is, who we worked with on the McAvoy project, and they did an excellent job on that project. So we've taken them right now as the designer for the preliminary steps of this project. So originally, there was two concepts that were developed. And that committee that Bruce, Mr. Mealy, myself sat on, we offered comments back to Waterfield Design Group. And we solidified two concepts. And now the selectmen appointed the committee that Ms. Smedele, Amy are on, and myself, there's seven members on that committee. We took those two conceptual layouts and we developed what you see in front of you. This conceptual layout three is a compilation of basically the committee's comments and what we thought would be the best plan going forward that would satisfy the interests of not only the sports groups, but all the user groups in town. The goal of this project is to make this a focal point of North Andover, almost a gateway to the community. So we serve not only the interest of the sports groups, but the schools, the elderly. So what I'm going to do right now is I'm just going to take you through some of the features of the plan development. And as I get through it, be glad to take any comments or questions that you have on the project thus far. So again, this conceptual layout in front of you is a compilation of the committee's comments. And what you see in front of you is, you'll see there's a playground and parks and a multi-purpose court out towards the front of the parking area. We've also incorporated what we believe to be the most recent locationally proposed kindergarten building. If that changes, obviously, we'll have to adopt our plans likewise. But we've tried to provide ample parking because we know that as of right now, the middle school and just certain events with sporting events going on, the parking is insufficient. So we've tried to increase the parking as much as we can. We've maintained parking on both sides of the complex, and that is to allow users to go enter the facility from different areas. They don't have to traverse through the whole complex. We've maintained the points of access and egress right now to the facility. Those remain in place. What you see in the middle of it, it looks like there's a soccer field there. That is meant to be used for football as well. It's just that the soccer field is portrayed as a larger field, so that's why you see that there. But that's just represented, there's a ninety-foot baseball diamond. There is up towards the top of the page, there is what's planned to be a softball field, which can also be used for a fifty-seventy baseball field. There's also an area there that could be used for lacrosse, football, or soccer. Some of the other features, those are mainly for the sports groups. But other features within the facility are, there's an amphitheater proposed into the natural landscape down towards the proposed kindergarten building. There are, as you see, the green, the green throughout a tree. So we're trying to, trying to take into consideration parents and children who need to get out of the sun. One of the things that McAvoy Field does, does not have, is it does not have a lot of shade, and that's a concern around the playground area. So we've tried to incorporate trees throughout the facility to allow for shade, as well as trees along the residence to provide a buffer. So there will be bathroom facilities, probably in the idea of two. What you don't see on here is some of the ancillary features like dugouts for the fields, bleachers. Those would be added later, but our goal is to basically develop a preliminary design with all the comments from as much user groups as possible before we reach town meeting. And as of right now, we have a request into the Community Preservation Committee for design funds for next year. That has been approved by the committee and will go to town meeting for approval. So if we reach, if we are successful in gaining approval for that, we will go on to final design after July one with the goal of hopefully getting this project out to bid for construction in the spring of two thousand and eighteen. Because of the size of the project, we're looking at a price tag approximately around ten million dollars. So it's going to have to be phased. We'd like to be able to do it in three phases. If we were able to reduce some of the features, we might be able to get it in two phases. But because it's such a considerable amount of money, it's probably going to be three phases. But we'll tackle that once we get into final design. Some of the features that may not be apparent on here is we propose lighting for both fields. We understand and are cognizant of the residents in the area, so we propose probably to put a curfew on the lights at like ten o'clock at night. There is walking paths around the perimeter of the facility. We believe that will allow, take the place almost of Hay Stadium. We really looked closely at maintaining a track, but we feel that the high school track serves the needs of the community at this point. We also looked at features like tennis courts. Tennis courts right now at the high school are underutilized. So before, one of the earlier concepts, we had separate facilities for tennis courts, street hockey. And what you see on there now is a multi-purpose court.
The red and green.
The red and green. So that's a hard court that could be used for different, different sports. The basketball court, we put over by the middle school where it is now to maintain that. We do show an outdoor classroom right now. We do understand there is an outdoor classroom in the middle school right now. Most of the feedback on the outdoor classroom is it probably will be underutilized. So we may look to use that for another feature, possibly a pavilion, a picnic area, or some other use that would be benefits to the community. One of the features that you won't see on this plan is, we're speaking about, is having some exercise stations along the walking path for people to be able to exercise and somewhat make this as friendly as possible to the elderly as well as, you know, just the user groups. We do need to meet with the police chief and the fire chief to address their concerns regarding security, emergency access to the facility. Also, with this plan, as most of you know now, most of the sports fields are maintained by the different organizations, whether it be NASA or Little League. Because this facility falls on school property and there'll be so many users on it, I've talked to the town manager about developing a comprehensive maintenance plan for the facility. So I think that would be probably something would go out to an annual contract or multi-year contract to maintain the facility. So we don't, we don't run into any situation where it's becoming in disrepair. And also, another feature will be the concession stand. There will be a concession stand, and I'm not sure exactly the extent of the concession stand, but I imagine it's going to be, you know, a full concession stand to be able to make food and prepare food on site. Some issues that have come up are the playground, which is down towards the middle school, which Amy mentioned by the multi-court, the orange and green area. There was really a discussion about the Atkinson School utilizing that playground. Issue has come up about how to manage that during school hours, if the school wanted to use the playground as well as the public. That's something we have to consider. So this group may be the perfect group to comment on that.
And we're thinking also the kindergarten, being able to use it. It would be the kindergarten, right?
Okay, okay.
And also, to the same point, I know going to PTAC meetings at the middle school, Dr. McQuade has always said that she would like more recess opportunity for some of the middle school kids, and that's why the basketball court, and actually that sport court, you know, potentially could be accessed as a recess option. That's why we wanted it to be close to the middle school. And the amphitheater, we all visualize those chorus concerts in nice weather could be out there instead of in the auditorium and ideas like that, so.
Again, what you don't see on here is you don't see details, you don't see the drainage or grading or anything like that. And that's, we haven't developed that yet. Our thoughts on the drainage would be to have underground storage so that we maximize the usable area in the facility and don't have a detention pond visible. And also, along the pathways, there'd probably be some low, low luminal lighting to light that up. If there's any questions, please feel free to ask.
Well, I think the thing that was most important to the group that we really spent a lot of time on is to make it a project that appeals to the entire town. We put special attentions towards the elderly. The elderly right now is one of our fastest-growing populations. And they're, they're healthier, they're stronger, they're living longer. And some of the things that they don't have at the senior center are great exercise facilities and things like that. So we've tried to incorporate that and make it handicap accessible and accessible to families with baby carriages and things like that. So we really are trying to make it a real town center for just, you know, just fun and exercise and hope that it's a blending of, of the community, you know, that we're sharing the same space that a lot can come from that as well. But Rick is, I have to say this, he's just been unbelievably, we are so lucky to have him. Not for just this project, but others. He's just so knowledgeable and, and the other members as well. It's a great working group.
We've had a great committee. We've made a lot of progress, make sure a lot of time.
That's great, that's great. Do you want to add anything to that, Ms. Mably, right now?
We're similar to the kindergarten road show we've been doing. Rick's been going to meet with a lot of groups, a lot of the sports groups have been met with, still going to be meeting with, like you said, police, fire. We still have to work out something at the middle school to talk with Dr. McQuade and people there and invite the community to things like that, senior center, all those locations, to get the same kind of input to make sure that we're hitting the mark. So everyone's excited and interested in this project.
Okay. Any questions with the committee?
I just want to say, I mean, I think the key thing that I picked up was probably one of your first sentences, this is a focal point. And I really, really commend you and congratulate you and everybody on the committee for the, for the amount of time that you've put into this. I mean, just looking at this, this is amazing. And I think everybody who drives kind of down 125 and sees those fields just sitting there, and they are, you know, except for maybe Sundays, you know, on, in the fall when we've got, you know, flag football out there and sometimes there's some baseball and softball that's being played there, they really sit. And I think, you know, if we've got the ability to get kids out there, you know, these sports courts look fantastic. I'm afraid to show these to my kids because I'm sure they're going to want them built tomorrow. But to have that there, to, you know, have an amphitheater where maybe there's some music going on or, you know, maybe one of the drama groups is putting on an outdoor production.
Right, exactly.
All of this is just really, really amazing. And I think that this is, as you said, you know, the population that's, that's growing, that's older, you know, would be. would be here, and then, you know, so many places for young families to be here. This is amazing. The one thing I, I think, I kept looking to see if it was here, but, um, just if we have an aerial of, of what it looks like right now, um, which I'm sure you do, but like, I would love to just basically have one of those, I, I forget what they call them in the architectural world.
We do have an existing conditions drawing.
Yeah, with that overlay, to just see how amazing, um, this, this space that is right in the center just would grow and develop and, and be such a hub, so this is, this is fantastic.
The little gray box in the lower right-hand corner, the whole document does also outline, which has come up with other groups, that this, even though it doesn't look unattractive, there are significantly more parking spaces than currently exist, which everybody's been hopeful for as well.
Yeah, I did notice about two hundred more, which is also.
Yes, which is significant for the middle school in particular, when they have events.
We've increased that as much as we could.
Yeah.
The other thing that I love, um, and, and my sons do cross-country, um, and, you know, they have to do that out at Sharpeners, um, which is not a bad place to be. Um, but they're running through, you know, some of the yard waste and all of that stuff. And so, you know, I'm just looking at this and wondering, you know, there's a half-mile loop, there's a possibility of another quarter-mile loop that's there. Are you thinking that the middle school cross-country program would, would be able to use this as well?
Different than McAvoy. McAvoy, the, the walking path around it is stoned us. We're thinking about hard pack, because the stoned us in itself is a nice feature, represents a problem with maintenance and weeds growing in and just constant maintenance on it, so.
Okay.
Our plan, our proposed plan is to make that a hard pack surface, so it could be used for running as well as walking.
And strollers and walkers or any.
Yeah, all that stuff.
It allows, it allows people, parents, you know, relatives that come to the sporting events, allows them another form of exercise or something to do besides watch the game rather than the facility.
Thank you for thinking of.
Uh, one thing I probably didn't mention, I, I may have mentioned, is that we, we are looking at strongly in support of turf fields.
Okay.
Because of the problem we're gonna have is obviously, if we were allowed to have lighting in there, these fields are gonna be heavily used. And our feeling is that if we ever went with grass, those fields are gonna be worn out and probably look like the way the middle school fields do now.
Right.
So.
Get a flash, yeah.
What's the life of a turf field?
Right now, I think it's about ten to fifteen years.
Ten to fifteen, okay.
So I think the, the plan, and I've already spoken to Andrew Mailer about this, would be to come up with some sort of funding to immediately start building a fund for replacement of the fields, so we don't get the useful life of the fields and then have a big problem of how we're gonna pay to replace them.
This is, this is fantastic, thank you.
A couple things. One, I can confirm that number. It used to be eight years for those fields, but we were just out on hours getting ready to do the replacement, and they're running ten to fifteen now. Also, it's important, because a big question that comes up often is about traffic flow, um, especially with us proposing a, another, a new building here. And a traffic study has been commissioned to help us design the safest, most efficient flow of traffic for the, for all the schools on the site.
Now, one more question. Uh, do you have any questions, Ms. Lutche?
No.
Ms. Picard, any questions?
I just have a comment. I don't, I don't see a whole lot of benches on here.
You won't right now.
I, I, I know there's a lot of detail, and there'll be more detail, so. But I just know, you know, moms with young children sometimes like to sit for a little bit, and certainly elderly people might bite off more than they can chew with a half-mile.
Yeah, I think that, again, those would be features that'll be added.
Right.
Um, and then, uh, another suggestion, because, um, because trees take a while to grow, you might wanna look at, um, shade sales, um, as, uh, one of the options for shade, so. But fantastic, wonderful, thank you. Really excited, can't wait to play pickleball.
It is a, it is a very exciting project.
Um, two things, well, three things. First of all, this would be so exciting for the town. Um, and I'm really excited as superintendent of schools that our schools are surrounding the space. I think that that's a wonderful, um, example of why this is such a great place to live, is that our schools and our community are one. So I'm excited about that. Two things to consider. Um, the exist, the current place for the reconstructed basketball court might be the place, if we do any renovations or expansions of the middle school. Um, so as you phase that in, that might want, you may wanna push off that phase a little, because that really is pretty much the only real usable space we would have if we do get approved from the MSBA. So, and then the second thing I, I would ask you to consider is, if you don't do the amphitheater, it would be very helpful to us if we could have some type of shared playground space for our K. Um, if not, we're gonna be going after the same funding from the CPC for, for a playground, and I think it would behoove all of us to work collaboratively on that. Um, and I think you could probably be pretty creative, where if you had a playground that was five to twelve, which our kindergartners could use. Um, there are not a lot of five to twelve-year-olds during the school day out playing on playgrounds, um, and we could separate that from the two to five space. We currently have a functional two to five space near our, um, early childhood center. Um, but most of the people who have their kids out on playgrounds when schools are in session are preschool-type kids. So, um, i- if you could move that closer to the K and we could get creative on that, I think we could support the K, have a, a great space for kids to play after school, um, and also kind of collaboratively use the funds in a way that would create less, less desire, less competition for those funds.
We've had a similar comment, that if the amphitheater were closer to the other side of the middle school for wheeling out piano and instruments and stuff, it might be better if the amphitheater were relocated. Um, again, that's all kind of under discussion. This is a conceptual.
The less that K kids had to walk to the playground, the better it is for us.
I think actually one of our earlier concepts had a playground over in that area. We, we had a design layout. We thought the, the K building was going behind the school, so our original layouts were with that setup. But we've obviously, as Mr. Mailly mentioned about the traffic, well, obviously, that looks, it's, it's a tough traffic pattern through there right now.
Yep, it is.
Ideally, it would be nice to have some turning lanes or a light on one twenty-five, but that's a process that has to go through MAS DOT, which is a considerably long process. There is, however, um, improvements planned by MAS DOT at the intersection of MAS F, so.
Yeah.
I believe Mr. Mailer told me that, uh, the firm that will be doing the traffic analysis out here for the s- school will have access to the traffic information on the MAS F intersection, so.
So thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Price. Uh, so first of all, uh, thank you, Ms. Lutche.
Neely, I know this committee was put together many, several months ago, um, and it was nice of you and the town manager to let us have a, a member on that. I think Amy, you've been on this committee for what, six, seven months now?
Since December, I guess.
Yeah, yeah, so it's good that we're included in that. So we, we really appreciate that.
Amy contributes a great.
She does.
So I wanna hit on the traffic thing real quickly, 'cause I know that the town has, uh, I'm hesitant to call it a traffic study though right now. Is it, is it really a stra-?
Called a traffic analysis.
Analysis. Could you just speak to the scope there? 'Cause I think when we go to town meeting, um, in, in a few weeks, that's gonna be one of the big questions regarding our class reduction plan, the kindergarten plan. Um, what is the, what's your expectation from that traffic analysis, I should say, because it's not a full-blown traffic study at this point? Is that correct? Anyone?
I actually don't have that answer. I, I can tell you it's not a full-blown traffic study. I would assume probably it's, it's counting cars, turning movements out on one twenty-five in the area of the school, and that's probably it right now.
Right.
Uh, there may be some recommendations as to how to improve access and egress into the middle school facility, but it probably wouldn't, it probably won't be too deep, because it's not a study.
Well, those of us who drive, um, by there every morning between eight and eight-thirty know that, right now, it's a, it's a traffic nightmare. And so we're gonna put this project and then our kindergarten project right there, and people are like, whoa, how the heck we're gonna handle that? I think it's a question that's gonna come up at town meeting, and hopefully this traffic analysis can give us options or ideas where to go. Has there been any discussion about, um, like even closing off the middle school access point up that way? I mean, is they, are they looking at that as, as much as well?
Uh, the consultants doing the traffic.
That, that, right now, yeah.
I don't know that.
Don't know?
I would as, I would assume.
We've got to connect with them, uh, with the principals to let them in on what, you know, how it works now, um, how we would prefer it to work, and what concerns we might have. So they have all that information.
Right, okay. So, yeah, I know, I mean, we've been through the, many projects. This is conceptual design, it's gonna change dramatically. Um, the access in egress on one twenty-five would be obviously a huge component of that, that I'm sure we'd, you know, get our, our state delegation to help us with that, if that need be. How much money are you looking for, uh, uh, this year at, uh, at town meeting through the CPC?
Six hundred thousand.
And that's just for design?
That's for design.
Okay.
Seeing how that you're touching upon that, I think, and I wish I knew the number, maybe you might even know it, Jim. I used to know that, this number off the top of my head. That, um, track is in such terrible, terrible, almost liable condition.
I absolutely agree with you. The bleachers too.
And the price tag, I, when I was on the finance committees, we're going back a long time, what it was then and what it is now is just enormously different. Do you remember offhand?
I don't know that number.
It's in the millions. I mean, multi-millions, but so, it's, so to be able to take these funds to do this great park and what we would've just to try to make that track safe is, is a great thing. I mean, it's, it's certainly using our monies efficiently. But, um, so people kinda need to keep that in mind. And we're doing it in phases.
Sure.
So we're trying to not make it a burden on the taxpayers in any way, shape, or form, and not looking for an override or anything like that.
Right. So i- if this is successful at town meeting, which I'm sure it will be, and hopefully the kindergarten plan would be, at least going forward, the design would include the proposed kindergarten at that point. The, Dr. Price mentioned, you know, what our long-term goal at the middle school is, and that's something that hopefully we could, we could factor in. But I would, I would speculate that you're probably not gonna know what that, we're not gonna know how that turns out for a few years. So, um, it's something to keep in mind. And lastly, you've mentioned, uh, at the end of your comments about potential revenue sour, other revenue sources for the fields. I think like advertising, sponsorships, what kind of things you're talking about there?
The CPC funds will only, they will not pay for turf. So they will pay for everything up to the turf. So we would have to come up with some additional funds to pay for the turf.
Well, keep us in the loop on that, 'cause we'd like to be helpful, helpful with that. I know I would.
Yeah, absolutely.
Well, again, I can't thank you enough for, for coming here tonight and talking about this. This is a very important part of the town, and obviously it's interwoven, what, what we wanna do as a school committee, so. So thank you. Thanks for coming, thanks for your work.
There will be a, a public meeting. We're hoping to have it probably the first week in May or second, but before town meeting, it'll be in the middle school.
Okay.
I need a little help to know who I have to speak with if I just fill out a form to get the auditorium, or if we need to talk to Joan, or, okay. We're happy to, we're not posting any of our. Great.
Yeah? You vote for us, we'll vote for you. How's that sound?
Absolutely.
Thank you, Rick, thank you, Rosemary.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Rick and Rosemary.
Okay. I know, huh? All right. Uh, next order of business, the second reading and approval of Northern High School FY eighteen overnight trip to France. Madam Superintendent.
En français, s'il vous plaît. Um, okay, so, uh, for your new members, uh, we tried not to have too much carryover, but we needed to get this approved. So I hope you will, um, go on with us for a second reading, if, if that's okay for you. So this is our, um, annual trip to France. We did not run it this year, 'cause we didn't have enough chill, enough students. So this is the, the typical form, our thoughts. It would be next April, so a year from basically now. Um, and it would be Christmas Carol taking students to our sister school, um, in, in France, which is actually in the southern part. Chris Carroll?
Oh, I said Christmas Carol.
Her name is Christmas Carroll. You're not deaf. But we've had a longstanding exchange with the Lycée Saint-Joseph de Moselle School, which is in the southern part of France. Um, and, uh, we just want to approve this so that we can start getting recruiting for students.
And their students did come this past year in October, November, right?
Even though we did not return.
Right.
So.
Okay, any questions?
I know we talked about this at our last meeting, but obviously, two of you were not here. Do you have any further questions?
I have one question, and maybe you did talk about it last time, but what, with the current climate? What about, what if terrorism is still an issue next year?
So whenever we do these international trips, we really rely on our State Department to tell us whether or not it is safe to travel. And that is how we, we, we benchmark whether or not. Um, there are two ways for us to know if families are supportive. One is, um, families may not send their kids, and that means we don't run the ch- the trip. Um, if families are still willing to send their kids and the State Department advises us that it's not safe to run the trip, we will not run the trip. But, um, in our experience, it's really using
But in our experience, it's really using the State Department warnings and how they feel about whether or not it's safe for Americans to be traveling.
And then do students get their money back if that happens?
If that happens, so I have to say it has never happened in my experience of running Good. tons and tons of trips, but it does happen that parents choose not to send their, their kids. So then they, of course, they get their money back because we have not committed to the trip at that point. But if the State Department said to us that we could not do it, it's something we would, we would work really hard to make sure that no one lost money as a result of that.
I was actually referring to after they commit to the trip, so like, let's say.
So that would, that would.
A couple months before.
Yeah, and that would be a State Department action, and we would probably have to figure out what role we're going to play as a school in that. Again, in my 12 years of high school trips, that has not happened to me yet.
Yep.
Isn't there usually a schedule, basically?
Yes.
You know, like X number of weeks before you're entitled to 75% back, or you know, whatever, I forget exactly what.
But if something happened and there was a major change at the last minute, you know. Yes, it's all this assurance stuff, right. Yeah, I can give you an example. We, we hosted a French exchange trip and they were due to come right around the marathon bombing, and actually the French school chose not to come to Boston. So I think we always think about leaving. It was actually, the only time I've ever had this happen is when the French school said, we're not going to Boston. Which is an interesting perspective, right?
I don't think about that.
Yeah, so, but yeah.
I have a few questions. One, the forum group and the promotor, are those groups that we've worked with before that we're familiar with? Are those new groups?
So I didn't, was not here for this year's trip, so I would assume that these are organizations that Chris has worked with. One of the things we do do moving forward is if there is, we actually do a whole ethics component for this, which, which Chris Carroll will have to go through for this.
And then, and then I have a question I have, this is a general, not specific to this trip. But do kids do any sort of medical clearance form? Do they have to have a physical before they go? Some sort of, you know, sign off that they're physically and mentally in good health and appropriate for all kinds of travel and experiences?
So I actually think that might be, I don't think we might be able to do all that, actually, but I, I don't know. I do know that there's a second round of this where we actually take the list of the students and the school nurses based on the documentation that we are provided. Look at medications and issues that they really work with. In some cases, we've sent nurses on school trips if necessary. I think that we would probably be in, in violation of some stuff if we said that they had to be emotionally and et cetera. I think we can only take what we can get from medical records that we have access to at school. So the school nurses do sign off on this.
So like for sports and stuff, they have to have a physical within the last year, so would they have had, had to have had a physical within the last year?
I have never heard of having to have a physical to go on a field trip or a, or an, that's just not been practiced, but.
Yeah, it's just, you know.
Yeah.
General questions sometimes.
Yeah, I don't, I've never heard of that before. Have you, Mr. Gilligan?
Never in my experience. Talking with colleagues about field trips and it's a, field trips and changing this form came up a couple, maybe what is it, a year ago? We talked to several local places and that's nothing I've ever heard.
But we do have the school nurses check the list. That's something that has been new in the last year is to make sure that the school nurses sign off on it. With the medical documentation that we have as being the school.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Interesting question.
Anything further? Motion?
I will move to approve, let me get my page here. I will move to approve as presented in the packet to the 2018 French exchange trip.
Question made by Ms. McDavid.
Second.
Second by Ms. Maybley. Any further discussion? Hold up there, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous? Okay, so that's approved. Okay, move on to new business, presentation of mathematics curriculum. Mr. Gilligan.
Thank you, Chair Teresi. I'd like to introduce the fabulous team that hits tonight. It's Kara Larkum. She's our K through 12 STEM Director for the district.
Mother of Zoe.
Mother of Zoe. We have Andrea Tepperman, and Andrea's been with us in a variety of roles over the years, and she's currently a first grade teacher at the ANEEL Sargent School. And then from the private Alba D. Thompson, we have Colleen Hallback, who's a third grade teacher. And they're going to be participating in the presentation tonight. So Mr. Maybley, if we could go, go on. So just to take you a very quick, Chair Teresi, down memory lane, we.
The way back time machine?
Yeah. We, when we went back, probably the last time we updated math materials was probably right around the 2004 time period. And at the time, there was a very small pilot in the school committee, along with a committee recommended to go with Houghton Mifflin Mathematics through the K through five. Subsequently, over several years and some tough budgets and money being frozen, we hadn't been, had a chance to update those materials. It was pretty exciting at one point when we found out that the materials we were buying that were outdated from Houghton Mifflin, just on the older side, we could no longer get because they were no longer being printed by the publisher and we're getting them through a third party. So at that time, we really started to explore without new revenues coming in, what's a way that would be cost neutral to find an appropriate math resource? And at the time, Go Mathematics, which was the updated version from Houghton Mifflin, which is used in several local communities, was something that we thought we were going to be able to do to get the most updated material in the hands of teachers with the appropriate professional development to do that. Once Dr. Price came on board and we all started working closely with Dr. Straight, myself, the town manager, and the Medicaid funds became something that looked like it was on the horizon for reality, we had the opportunity to say, okay, we don't, the Houghton, Houghton Mifflin is pretty good, and there's no perfect program out there and you have to understand that. You know, some programs are strong in one thing and some resources are stronger in others. But we started then to research and take a hard look at, well, what are some of the other things? Because we don't want to be limited now and we're not going to settle on something that's not going to be best for North and Over. So at that time, in conjunction with talking with one of our math consultants, the Northeast Consortium for Staff Development, some of our curriculum committees, local communities, the most, the one that rose to the top was really Eureka and Go. So at that time, over the past year, we've had the opportunity now, in this past year, 60 elementary teachers piloted a resource. Thirty-one used Go Math, which is the updated Houghton Mifflin, and 29 used Eureka Math. And Jim, if you go to the next slide, we really wanted to be thoughtful and particularly take teacher input. I'm going to let Ms. Larkum talk in a little bit about concurrently our math committee that's working on mapping all of our standards in units K through 12, or pre-K through 12, I should say. But when we started to take a look at gathering information just after the new year, we have collected a lot of information from the 60 teachers that piloted. That included surveys, that included input, that included days where we had folks come in and talk about the programs. We had people have the opportunity to switch lessons, you know, use one for the other. We had an opportunity this year, we had a teacher use Go Math last year and switched to Eureka this year. And more importantly, we had opportunities for staff on Ed Camp Day and for a few week period here at Central Office to come by and check out the different materials, which was pretty excellent, if you go back, Jim. Additionally, we were in some pretty serious talks with local districts about their decisions because, you know, there's 351 cities and towns in the Commonwealth, and a lot of times they, everyone's doing their own thing. But when we got out and started talking about all the districts that struggled with this decision, we talked to districts like Tucksbury that went with Go Math. But we were very fortunate to have some really close relationships with Groton Dunstable, which adopted Eureka, with North Running Public Schools, which adopted Eureka, with Methuen Public. So we had a really good chance to go out and take a look at that. In addition to that, with the Central Office team, Central Office staff, principals, assistant principals, taking all the teacher input, taking the information we had from the Northeast Consortium for Staff Development, taking the information from local districts, working with our math consultant, we really wanted to look at the review of the materials. What's the level of rigor? How do they scaffold math concepts? And what are the technology components? And I think, I want to quote Greg Landry, I think said it the best. You know, Houghton Mifflin, in the end, it was a fine resource in the sense of it had the basics. It even had some more of the pretty bells and whistles of those massive publishing companies. But in the end, it was a unanimous decision for working with the teachers and everyone else to recommend, recommend Eureka Math. And Greg Landry said, Eureka Math makes the most sense for the town of North Annova because I want my kids challenged. This is a rigorous program from all that I'm looked at. And if you go back to the first slide, you know, Jim, if you could just go back one more, and I'm going to turn this over to Kara in a second. Yeah, right there. Part of our strategic plan, our five-year curriculum plan, if you remember, is moved towards a consistent and rigorous math curriculum. And Eureka Math, in our estimation, is the direction we want to head in the recommendation that we're making to the school committee. And at this time, I want to turn it over to Kara Larkum, my STEM Director.
So just to reiterate that, I have been pretty much asking everybody I know, parents and friends and family and every curriculum director, math person, elementary teacher, you know, what do you use, what do you love? And I think time and time again, kept hearing, oh, you know, we have Eureka, it's hard, it's a little challenging, but it's really good and, and you know, overwhelming, get it. I think Go Math again, like Mr. Gilligan said, there was some, some positive feedback on that end as well. And I think for, for our teachers, you know, a lot of the survey results that we saw and the input that we had said, you know, they really liked both of them. I think both of them were a tremendous improvement over the HMH, which was outdated. But some of the quotes on this slide kind of show you what they really loved and some of the things that struck us. So Eureka builds strong number sense, students really loved it. So that was another piece too that we heard, was that students were enjoying it, not just the, the teachers. I think a piece that, and we'll see in a little bit, that we'll keep working on is, is the parent component. Being a parent in the district myself, again, this is what I'm excited that my children will hopefully get a chance to learn from. So we had a lot of really positive quotes, the hands-on, the visual components, so lots of different ways to access the information, the material. So I'm going to turn it over to some teachers who have used it. Andrea Tepperman again, first grade at Sargent, who is, has just jumped on board this year, trying it out, and then pass it off to Colleen after that. This used a little bit longer.
And actually, last spring, I, after Ed Camp, where I went to a workshop about it, I kind of dove in a little bit last spring. And I teach first grade, and by the end of first grade, I had children regrouping in double-digit addition and subtraction, which is usually taught in second grade from using this. So, so really, my team was wonderful. I talked to them about it and, and actually the comments I got, it was really a team effort and my students' effort about what they loved about it, and they're so enthusiastic. It's not a program with a ton of bells and whistles, it just lays such a good, solid foundation of number sense. Probably the first four to five weeks is developing, you know, what's a five, what combinations make a five? What makes a six? What makes a 10? So by the time you get to addition, it just makes sense. I mean, they work for months on these simple, this is their personal whiteboard, which they love. These things called number bonds, and if you're working on five for the day, you know, you come up with all the combinations. So like I said, by the point you get to addition, they just get it. Prior to this teaching first grade, okay, you would work on addition for a few months. When you get to subtraction, you might have, well, have been teaching them Greek. It was like a whole new thing. But not anymore because they know what a 10 is and an eight is and the components that make it up, it just makes sense to them. In this program, they start word problems like the second day. And what really amazed me, I just had to bring some sample, like samples, we did something today in their math journals and, you know, the problem was Jane has seven dogs and five cats and John has nine cats and three dogs. He thinks he has more and she thinks it's the same, and you know, who's right? And I always tell them, okay, write one number sentence, draw a picture, whatever. They're, they're just come up with equations all over the place. There are number bonds, the addition, the subtraction that goes with it, and the three I brought are from children all different levels in my class. It has just been so successful.
That's first grade.
That's first grade.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah. And really, it is three different level children. My team, like I said, the comments I got from my first grade team, we sat down the last PD, so I'm not taking credit. Wonderful first grade team I work with and between us, and we're not going to break it up in calc, but we have over 80 years of experience and, and all of us feel it's the best math program we've ever worked with. The children just get it, the rigors there, there's not that rote memorizing math facts, they really understand it. We've moved into a measurement unit with all these little cubes, you know, which is longer, which is shorter, order for things in length. So it's, it's just been really, really successful. The kids think they're really playing games. There's, there's, for instance, red light, green light. You know, you say green light, they count by tens and they get to walk fast across the room. And then, you know, red light, and then green light again, they have to count backwards. And that has so many implications, again, for addition and subtraction, and they're do, they do that all through the program. Counting by twos, then threes, then fives and tens. And the other thing that we love, and then actually I talked with Dr. Foster and comments he's gotten from teachers throughout the grade levels, is there is regular assessment throughout the program. But they're called number sprints. They're 90-second things. You give two to three times a week. They're exit tickets. You do three to four times a week. So you really know where each child is functioning right away. You don't have to give these huge assessments that look scary. And so then if you have to differentiate and pull small groups, kids who are struggling or kids you want to challenge, you know right away which group to place children in. So we've been really excited and really appreciate Kara facilitating us being able to pilot this because it's really working.
And so kind of to jump on that same bandwagon, I have been using it for two years. And I have never seen more confidence in my students than I have this year. So what you can see in these pictures, the, we, on the first one, those are students taking one of those sprints that Andrea was talking about. And the way they do it in third grade is they race themselves. So they get a set of problems on one side, they have a minute to do it, and then they count how many they got correct, turn it over, do another minute, and then find the difference. And it's so fun. Just today, one kid got 23 more the second time he did it than the first. So just to see that built-in confidence, and they don't really realize that they're sitting, they are memorizing the facts as they go because it is fluency practice, but it's definitely more ingrained. And then the second picture shows, yeah, it shows that I say, all right, I need a caller. And a caller stands up and the caller reads the problem and will say, seven times five is, and then they go through the list. And those are all the kids that were like, oh, I want to be the caller, which is awesome because when I was in school, I would never have volunteered to be the caller, because I'd be so afraid to say something wrong. But they're not, and that picture shows success. So I love the fluency, but I mostly love that the program teaches students why things are the way they are. So when they're learning how to multiply, they're learning why they're multiplying that way, what that means. So what they're able to do is they're able to problem solve on their own. And the program, especially in third grade, really shows multiple different ways to approach a problem. So if a student doesn't feel so successful with one, there's always going to be another one that they feel successful with. So I don't care how they're showing the work, so long as they're able to show it somehow and problem solve it. In third grade, just like in first grade, the students do a lot of explaining their work. So because they're able to problem solve on their own, they're able to explain to each other and have mathematical conversations. I know it sounds kind of funny for third graders, but they do, and the vocabulary that they use is excellent. So they have awesome conversations with one another, they can explain to me, and they feel really successful, and that's huge for third graders. I had a student today who's an ELL student and has been sort of struggling throughout the year, and she got her first 100 on a math test. And she was so excited that she started to cry and the whole class started to cheer for her because everyone knows, you know, just how awesome that feels with this program. And I do a lot of technology as well. That's called an application problem. So what the students do is they read it, they draw a picture to show, and then they write their answer to it. So that's what they're doing in those pictures there.
That's what was so much.
Yeah.
Right, in first grade, they start right out. And that's exactly what you said, they're thinking mathematically right away.
Yeah, thinking and speaking mathematically, which I think are both very important skills moving forward.
And before I turn it back over to Ms. Larkum, I, I wanted to say that we've really worked hard to roll this out, very similar to the way we did with Lucy Cockens in the writing. You know, Lucy was one of those things that we had slowly worked on training teachers. The nice thing about Eureka is we have about a third of the elementary teachers who have had it for a year now. We realized that we'll be having to do the next steps, and Ms. Larkum's going to talk about the extensive PD. But the really nice piece to it has been the fact that, you know, in terms of Lucy Cockens and rolling that out and the excitement, it's really changed and brought a lot of practices, best practices for teachers. It's also brought a lot of joy. And more importantly, Anne and Jackie are literacy, are writing coaches, are reading coaches, excuse me, have really done a tremendous job to assist with that implementation and that ongoing PD because we're going to need that. And that's where the math coach really ties in to play a critical role for us in terms of assisting teachers through coaching cycles, et cetera. So I just wanted to say, we've really modeled similar to what we've done with Lucy Cockens over the past few years to do something similar here with mathematics.
I'd say to you again, the teachers that have piloted, I give them huge kudos because they really have had very little support and just kind of dove in. And again, it's, it's similar to Lucy Cockens that it gives teachers a lot of options, but providing kind of that structure and kind of pacing charts and kind of all the tools they need. But as Colleen mentioned too, that they have lots of ways to show their work and it's building skills in students, not just that rote, you know, memorize this, move on, move on, move on, check off the box, yep, we did that, okay, next topic, that they're really understanding that, that math component, which is great. So in terms of our implementation plan, we are looking into purchasing the teacher's editions for each teacher in the classroom as well as our special education staff so that they can have their own copy to modify and assist for our students in, on IEPs and our ELL students. And then each student will have a student edition. So one of the other factors that I love about Eureka and Engage New York is, again, it's, all the resources are actually there totally 100% free. It's an open source program. Engage New York was a group of teachers from New York who developed it, and Eureka purchased that curriculum and have now expanded and provided, provide professional development, videos online and other resources for teachers. They've also developed homework tip sheets and parent tip sheets and some other features. So they've kind of taken and spanned it, but they also have provided it completely free. So anybody can go on, download it and use it. The reason that we feel it will be helpful, and these lovely leaders can jump in on this, to have the student editions is if you're printing pages and pages for every single student, you can imagine that that, you know, is, is expensive as well because now you're eating up the copiers and you can imagine how much, you know, how great it is when those go down and you need those handouts. And again, a lot of the components are digital and we can use the personal whiteboards and kind of manipulate math in different ways than just a worksheet. However, we feel especially in this first year, that it would be beneficial to students and teachers to have those workbooks on hand. They are workbooks where, where students, they're consumables, so every year they would be purchased. But you know, over time, we might be able to create Google Doc versions of them, edit them, tweak them, and make them really our own curriculum and resource. So that's an exciting component that isn't really out there with most of the big vendors. And then the manipulative kits, making sure that, and you know, Andrew brought a couple with her, you know, making sure that all those little manipulatives and items that students need. Yeah, for the games and the demonstrations are right there at teachers' fingertips. I've, again, in talking with different districts, that's not always a possibility for districts to purchase those items and teachers need to get really creative, and I'm sure you both have already. So we're really excited that that would be a component that we could purchase for teachers so that everybody has all the materials that they need to really implement a great math program. So in the 26, we are looking to spend our two-hour professional development time in that early release, really making sure that all teachers can get a really good feel, start to lay out what those components are, start to look at what the ordering needs are. You know, we wouldn't want to purchase a complete kit for a teacher who already has, you know, the majority of the components, so we can also purchase those manipulative items à la carte. And then my fun, exciting summer, I would love to meet with as many teachers that want to come in and do some drop-in sessions. At that point, again, with our budget, we anticipate being able to order hopefully July 1st so that teachers can start picking up materials and really kind of dive in deep over the summer if they're willing and able. And then when we come back, that full professional development day on August 31st would be dedicated entirely to math and really working through and making sure that everybody is, is ready for week one. And then ongoing PD support with the math coach, hopefully. Let's see, hire a fantastic one to really help teachers and provide some more support throughout the year. Along with that, as Mr. Gilligan said, we have started to create those consistent documents to really guide our math throughout the year, taking the Mass, Massachusetts math. to really guide our math throughout the year, taking the Mass- Massachusetts math frameworks, and really making sure that everybody has a clear understanding of what that means, breaking it down.
K through 12.
K through 12. So that's a very, a work in progress, and we're moving forward with that. What that will really do is help us see, you know, where are the strengths in Eureka? Where are the weaknesses? Where are the pieces that maybe we do supplement with something else? I think, you know, and these ladies can attest to it, I think that there are a wide range, and Eureka actually has a- some lessons you could skip. They know that they have provided so many different activities and lessons that you might not be able to get to all of them in a year, and that would kind of help with our map. We can figure out which of those lessons. They do provide a guideline for teachers, but do it kind of internally, what works for our students, and align those expectations. And then, I've already been, you know, at the regional Eureka group, this group we meet out in Hudson, Mass. about once a month, so I kind of went to learn from them and get a feel, and I'm excited to continue hopefully working with them to get more resources. And again, I think the districts are very open in sharing the documents, you know, other PowerPoints and manipulatives, you know, just whatever ideas teachers have already developed in districts. We have a Google Drive already folder shared that has a lot of wealth of resources. And then, again, parents will need some updating. I think the new standards in 2011 shifted a lot of how we all learned math, and now trying to explain it to our students is not always easy, when they come home with these other ways to think about math and talk about math that, I know, I wish I loved math, but it was a lot of memorization. So we'll do some parent nights throughout the year to help the parents understand and find a love of math, just like our students are. And then, really exciting, talking to Joan McQuain, you know, we're- she's really great on that transition fifth to sixth, as well as eighth to ninth, and said, you know, what can we do for our sixth grade? You know, they're all going to come in, and she has some money set aside in her budget that she is willing to provide for their sixth grade to do kind of a field test and see if it would be a good fit at the middle school. So that's really exciting in that K-12 lens to see. And again, it is a program that is K-12, so we have that potential to move forward, and actually, pre-K, so we could go down to our ECC as well. And then, lastly, we- a piece that Eureka does not have is an online component for students to do practice problems or independent work or assessments online. However, Zern.org is a company that took all of this curriculum and created a very game-based program. And so that's something that some of our teachers have started to use and try out. It's not a component that must be used, but with our technology, it's an option, and different teachers are trying it different ways. Some of our teachers already use Ten Marks and other programs, so we're going to continue to investigate some of those different resources. And Ten Marks and Zern do have free options, which is really nice, so we can try them out without any budget.
And I'll just point out, on the April 26th professional development, the second read will be April 27th, so we won't be purchasing any classes.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Gilligan. Any questions from the members? Good?
Yes.
Madam Vice Chairman.
Thank you.
Very exciting. I love seeing all this. So, am I to understand though, so if we go forward with this, is this a resource that we're giving that then teachers can choose this or stick with what they've been doing for years, or that everybody's going to go on board with this?
Perfect question.
Yeah, so this would be the consistent resource that we're looking for, so that all kids in North Atlantic have the same experience. One of the other things that we didn't talk about is how Eureka really lends itself to what's called a math workshop model, and that's some of the best practices that we use. And we use that not only in mathematics, but we also use workshop models in other areas. That's something that we'll be working on with PD. But, yeah.
So if anybody was reluctant, you'll have ways to encourage them to...
One of the nice things, and it's going to be really helpful, we did this with the principals with Lucy Cockens, is we're going to send all of the principals to an admin training for Eureka. And what it really does is it helps educate them more about the program than they already know, but it also tells them what they need to look for when they go into classrooms during lessons. And they have kind of a checklist to go through and say, "Well, you have to do this, you have to do this." And the nice thing is that the principals have really, in my estimation, really been working hard to- it's really hard to be a principal today, and our principals are working really hard to become even better instructional leaders. A lot of districts and a lot of places, principals have to manage everything from buses to bullies to bells, and ours are really making that switch. And they did it with Lucy Cockens, and we just did walkthroughs the other day. It was probably one of the best walkthroughs we've done all year, watching, you know those fifth graders you saw from Atkinson a while ago?
Right.
We saw some tremendous writing work taking place where all kids were engaged, even at numbers of 25, 26 kids in classes. So we're going to do that for principals. The other piece we have is we're also looking for key people from the school to possibly participate in a Eureka Institute. It's taking place this summer, they're all over the nation, but this one would be in Nashua. So we're actually looking to look, depending on how we can fund it, as an additional piece with a K to 2 teacher from each building, and a 3 to 5 teacher.
That's fine, so like, they'll be champions of it for this school, right? And then, one other comment was, I love seeing the whiteboards, because I have a ninth grader, and on their list of supplies that she needed in eighth grade was a whiteboard, and it was for practicing, I think, French or something. But she uses that for all kinds of subjects, for studying all the time, and the fact that you're going to be teaching them that kind of study skill, it's fantastic. So I love seeing that, and I think they probably think it's fun, too, right?
They love solving the problems, and then they share with the partner.
Yes, that's- I love seeing that, so that's great. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question. You mentioned that parents were excited about it, and I'm wondering if you did formal parent feedback, or if that was in parent-teacher conferences, or how you got information from parents with their feedback, especially about the home experience of math?
So, and I'll clarify to you, as a parent, I'm very excited about it, so I don't know if I misspoke and misrepresented that.
And we know how excited you are.
Yes. I'm thrilled. Not only to have a recommendation for you all, but I think in speaking with educators, I know one of our high school teachers has a student in a class that their son is using it, and just said, again, they are- they happen to be an English teacher, and said, "Wow, they're really getting it, this makes sense, this is, you know, it's not what- how I learned math," and exciting. So I think in just informal conversations, I don't know if you guys can speak...
Also connecting with the teachers, so we actually met in January as an entire elementary faculty myself, talking about this decision, because these are tough decisions sometimes, because oftentimes, when you're looking at something where there's pilots, you have folks that really get used to one thing, and they don't want to make that. And I have to say, I told Dr. Price one day, I said, "I've been getting really positive feedback. I haven't had one dissenter send me an email saying, 'Well, why can't I have, you know, Go Math?'" I think the teachers worked hard, and I think when we met in January, we were able to say, "Well, what are the experiences like from the parents?" I'm also a parent of a Eureka kid. My son's doing it this year.
Sounds really amazing.
I'm proud to be the parent of a Eureka kid. And I have to tell you, he liked math before, we did Thompson Ten Marks, and we also did Sunshine Math, but his math proficiency, or what he's doing, I mean, some days, I have to go into the thing and take a look. And he's with a teacher that actually has to copy all the papers, they have their own binders. So, you know, we got feedback in that sense. And we also, some of the folks talked also about the parent component of some of the things they liked about Go Math, too. And some of the concerns the parents raised, that, "Well, if my kid had this language one year and they're switching to this year," I'd say that's probably what I heard most from the teachers, from the parent feedback. We understand that there might be some gaps, just in terms of nomenclature and language, and we understand that we have to be able to fill those gaps as we move forward with a consistent product. So I'd probably say, that's probably the- I mean, as much as you hear the good things, I'd say from that meeting, we heard parents say, "Well, what if they have Eureka this year, and you guys can't make a decision, and then next year, they have a teacher with Go Math?" And I said, "Well, we're going to make a decision, because we can't continue to pilot, and it was just the right time with the money." So, parents had really mostly good things to say, their only concern was, "What if the kids miss gaps?" And the teachers realized that we have to get caught up with that.
Well, I'm also really excited about the parent nights. I know that makes a big difference, and I remember when we adopted the last math program, that we had parent nights, and they were very well-attended. People are- they're concerned about math, their own math experiences were varied, so I think that's a really important component of implementation. I'm pleased to see that.
Yeah, it's so important, because you look at the research, a lot of parents say, "I'm not good at math," and their kids adopt this attitude that they can't do math, and that is just totally not true.
That's right.
It just takes the work, so, but there is this math phobia. And it's hard when you're a parent and you're educated, and a lot of my friends who are parents, and they're not in education, they have master's degrees, MBAs, they have kids in fifth and sixth grade come home at home, and they're like, "I don't know." So it can be challenging.
Anything further, Helen?
I'm good.
Ms. Lynch, have it?
I mean, I know we just saw three students' examples of work, but, I mean, I'm still sitting there thinking, "That's first grade." And I just think that that's fantastic. I mean, I love the fact that they're able to visually, you know, kind of draw out what the answer is, kind of explain where they got to it. They were all at different levels, and so I thought that was really interesting. And then, obviously, they can articulate it, but then to write it down, and, you know, all the first grade spelling and all of that fun stuff that's there as well, which I always think is just great, but, you know, it's there, right? And it's all, and I think you actually said it, but these are the foundations and these are the blocks. And I don't remember my kids, and my youngest is now in third, really doing all of that at first grade. You know, maybe in second grade, we were starting to do a little more of that reasoning concept that was out there, but I love that we're just bringing it even earlier into the process. And so, it looks great, and then, you know, all those kids raising their hands. I'm not sure if it was to call, or does that mean they don't have to do the work?
Okay, all right.
Because I know when my son has to do a, you know, when he gives the spelling test, that means he doesn't have to take it that week. So I was like, "Is that the motivation?" All right, all right, I like that. All right, awesome, thank you.
And I beg to differ on Ms. Hall back. I had her on World Civilizations 1, and she answered a lot of questions.
Can I ask the teachers, so you know, we- I know I tweeted out a Lucy Cockens piece from your class, can you just talk about how the two work together? Because, you know, we've brought in a writing curriculum, and now we're bringing in a math curriculum, and, you know, what I've heard is that this concept of like, really giving the students the work, allowing them different options, workshop model, is there- are you seeing any of that? I would just be really interested in how the two fit together. I know I'm asking a question that's a little bit beyond, but I was just wondering if you see that at all.
I noticed it, I definitely noticed it. I mean, I also use the Reader's Workshop for reading, and I use the Writer's Workshop. So it is all throughout my day, and I think what it really does is fosters the independence in the students. So I do see that, and again, it's a confidence thing, it's being able to take what you've learned and go and apply it, using different strategies. So I definitely do see it throughout the day. Of course, the way the math program works, there's- it's not necessarily an, "I'm going to teach, you're going to practice, and you're going to go." There's a lot more coming back and forth, especially with a lot of the students, because it's so easy to pinpoint where a student is struggling, that there's a lot more back and forth than I would see in writing and reading. And the conferences in math can be super quick, whereas in writing and reading, sometimes it takes several minutes. So they differ, but I mean, I guess it does carry through.
Great.
Does that make sense?
Yeah. First grade, I'm not sure I can, you know, see that super connection at this point, but...
It's the teaching, then practicing, and then letting them go. It's- so it does definitely lend its hand in that.
Great, thank you.
What about votes, you good? You got a vote?
If you guys don't have any other questions, they should probably get home and work on their homework.
Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
So, Mr. Chairman, just in terms of process with last year, one of the things we did last year, we had a little bit of a conversation about, you know, curriculum decisions. This is a big decision, so last year, we actually did make a vote to support the Lucy Cockens. I would be- we would be looking for something for that similar at our next meeting.
Twenty-seven, okay.
I think that's important. Yes.
Okay, sounds good. Okay, the next item of business was added just yesterday, and there is a very good reason why, that I know Dr. Price will elaborate on at this point.
I may actually allow Mr. Mealy to elaborate, if that's okay, Mr. Chairman.
So for the new members, I'd be surprised if you don't already know that, a couple of years ago, at town meeting, a special education stabilization fund was set up. And last year, we transferred $150,000 to help with unanticipated expenses, mostly from out-of-district placements that we hadn't anticipated. This year, if you've been following along, we're projecting $200,000 as a need, and this is the mechanics. Now, the reason it's coming forward tonight and requiring the vote tonight is, we were anticipating that it just needed to be done by town meeting, but the town manager pointed out that it really should be initiated by the school committee as a request to the Board of Selectmen and then the Finance Committee to approve this. So because of the way the meetings are now set up, and we don't have a meeting during the April vacation, it's not until the 27th, it wouldn't work unless we vote tonight, and then the Board of Selectmen are going to vote on Monday, the 10th, and then the Finance Committee would have enough time, and then all the committees would have voted by town meeting.
Yeah, so the stuff that we're actually going to do is, again... Just where the calendar works. So, the request tonight is, as far as, usually as you know, we have two readings of the issue before we vote on it. So we're going to ask for two votes tonight, one to suspend our policy, suspend the rules, and then the second is to actually vote, are we asked, so...
The word is approve the transfer of...
Approve the transfer.
Yes.
About that, so, are there any questions for Dr. Price or Mr. Mealy on that, before we get going on that?
One question, since the stabilization fund is only a couple of years old, we took some out of it, like, what's in the fund?
Right, so initially, it was set up at 750,000, and the most that can be taken in any one year is 250,000, and in a two-year period, 400,000.
Right, okay, now I remember.
Yes.
I just have a question of clarification. It says special town meeting, but this is just regular town meeting.
No, what we'll do, when we did this last year, if I recall correctly, we'll actually recess the annual town meeting, and we'll enter a special town meeting to consider this.
Shakespearean play within a play? I'm understanding now, thank you.
We'll vote to approve this. Believe me, Mr. Moderator DeSalvo will explain it in fantastic detail for all of us.
That is well said. That's a very good analogy.
I think that's how the mechanics are going to work.
Okay.
Any other questions about that? Then we'll talk about why we did the 20,000, we'll comfortable with that, too?
I am.
Okay. So, you certainly can.
Can I move that we suspend the rules in order to consider approval of the special town meeting warrant article for the transfer of funds from Special Education Stabilization Fund to the fiscal year 2017 School Department Budget?
Second.
Motion made by Mr. McDevitt, second by Ms. May- Vice Chair Mabley, to suspend the rules. All those in favor? We'll call a roll on suspension of the rules. Ms. Lynch?
Yes.
Mr. McDevitt?
Yes.
Ms. Mabley?
Yes.
Ms. Picard?
Yes.
Mr. Trissey votes yes, so that's a 5-0 vote to suspend the rules for that. Okay, now on the main issue.
So, I move that we approve, as presented, the special town meeting warrant article for the transfer of funds from the Special Education Stabilization Fund to the fiscal year 17 School Department Budget. I believe the wording of that's correct.
That looks like it's the name.
Yes.
Motion by Mr. McDevitt.
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Mabley. Any further discussion?
This is Vice Chair Mabley referring to the chair.
I will call the, uh, Clerk Lynch.
Yes.
Mr. McDevitt?
Yes.
Ms. Mabley?
Yes.
Ms. Picard?
Yes.
Yes.
And Mr. Trissey votes yes as well. So, that's a five-vote vote. Okay. Okay, that's it for the main agenda. I'm sure the two new members know, usually at this point, we open up to the school committee to say if they want to add any things that are going on, so...
I just wanted to report, I went to the NAIPAC meeting yesterday, and in addition to sharing Dr. Price's award, we also talked a lot about understanding our differences and moving forward for next year, whether we were going to roll out more programs or cut back. And the group decided that based on the difficulty we're having getting volunteers to fund, like, to volunteer at all the programs, that we may actually cut back instead of doing three fifth-grade programs to just two, but hopefully bring up the three, the grade-three programs that I piloted at Sargent to all the, roll them out to all the elementary schools. So, we're just looking for more project coordinators to do that, and that's really the big, that's really what we discussed most of the meeting.
Thank you.
Yep.
A couple of quick things. One, again, congratulations, Dr. Price. It was great to see how, not that we don't know how respected you are in your community, but two years later, how still they're...
Better.
Better, actually, yeah, that is a good word, but how thankful they are for the leadership that you had at Newton North, and more certainly, the beneficiaries of that. Couple of quick things. Tomorrow night is fifth grade movie night, so the fifth grade kind of gathers at the middle school for, I think it's Tales of a Middle School...
How I Survived the Middle School.
How I Survived the Middle School, yes, thank you. We're hosting it, or organizing it, I don't even know the new movie name. So, that's there. And then Saturday night is the Youth Center event. So, obviously, the Youth Center is such an integral part of the community and such a resource for us in town. So, I know that there's a lot of people who are going out to support that, so thank you for doing that and continuing to make this available for our students. And then the other thing as well, which I always look forward to, because it helps me clean out my garage and my basement, but on the 29th is the fifth grade kind of giving back to the community. So, there's a drop-off at the middle school, I believe it is either 9:30 to 1:00 or 10:00 to 1:00, and they have about half a dozen, eight different organizations that come and take household items and things, and they help to refurbish them out to people who are in need of those. And it's just, it's a great opportunity for the fifth graders to really start to work together as they get ready to move to the middle school the following year. So, that was it. And congratulations to Helen and Holly.
No, thank you.
So, excited to have you here.
Good.
I would just give a shout-out to our high school choral groups, who won silver and gold at the MICA competition last weekend, and our all-town band fest this week was, you know, phenomenal. Hundreds and hundreds of musicians, some of whom only started playing six months ago, some of whom have been playing for many years, and we heard some of the music that was played in California in the fieldhouse, which I'm sure is not as good a setting as the halls they played in California, but it's really just wonderful to have those opportunities to hear.
Yes, I'd like to also welcome Helen and Holly to our board. It's very exciting to have more females here. It's nice. Not that the males weren't fabulous as well, but what else? I had something else that I was going to tell you, and even now, I don't remember what it is. Shoot.
Look, I'm actually using time.
All right, I'll think of it in a minute. I had something to tell you. I forgot.
Yes.
Sure.
This is a really important one, and I really encourage parents to attend. Tuesday, April 11th, the NAPRN is putting on the opioid education night for parents and students. It's at North End of a High School in the auditorium and cafeteria. It's being sponsored by the Youth Center. I know places like Stachi's are providing food. This is critical that parents in our community attend. It's a serious epidemic across the Merrimack Valley. I know several young former students have lost their lives to this terrible addiction and disease, and I really encourage, if you can make it Tuesday night, please do so.
Thank you.
I do remember, yeah. I don't know the exact name of it, but I think another event that's happening Saturday night is the...
A Night to Shine.
Exactly, thank you. A Night to Shine, it's inducting athletes into our Hall of Fame for our high schools since the Johnson, I guess it's now called Johnson North Andover/North Andover Hall of Fame, right?
1867 Johnson.
Yes. But they're still carrying that name, so...
I thought you were thinking of another event that was going, that's called A Night to Shine, but I'm sorry.
Isn't...that's...okay, that's yet another one this Saturday night?
Yes, it is.
All three.
That's the NAMA, the North Andover Merchant Association, who recognizing Mike and Jim Zanakis.
That's right, oh, Zanakis', that's right. So, there are three things.
Lot going on.
Yes, those are important things. And then also, I just want to mention that Dr. Price's kindergarten roadshow has been going, I think, very nicely. She's been going out and meeting with the various communities, for good or for ill. The questions are pretty much the same across the board from every group we've met with so far, and I think the answers that Dr. Price is providing is resonating with people and easing anybody's concerns. So, I appreciate all those nights that you're doing that in afternoons and mornings, and thank you for continuing that. I think the whole community appreciates it.
There's still three or four more dates left, I think, so...
Yes.
On the website?
It's on the website. I tweet them out. We're going to be at Small Axe, we're going to be at the Youth Center. I have one more still at Kittredge, Senior Center with Mr. Mailer.
Yep.
I think my favorite was when we were at the Stevens Memorial Library on the floor with preschoolers.
Yes, that was very nice.
Helen and Amy were with me, so just, probably everyone knows that this is old news, but I'm very excited, very excited that Chet Jackson is going to be the next principal of North Andover High School. You know, just a few quick comments. We really put Chet through a very rigorous process that involved a large interview, lots of parents and students involved in the committee. He spent a whole day through a process where he met with faculty, he talked to students, he walked through classes with Mr. Gilligan and I, he met with the leadership team, he met with me. You know, and in the end, a lot of things came forward about Chet to make sure that he, to just confirm frankly for me that he was the right choice for the high school position, his passion for this community, his desire to really take the North Andover High School to the next level, and his real commitment to his own growth. I think, you know, Chet's never been a high school principal before, and he's really understanding that he's going to have a lot to learn, and he is looking to us to support him, and I think that really bodes well for his future. So, I'm very excited that Chet has agreed to become our next principal, and I look forward, as you know, we are now, we have now just advertised two assistant principal positions. Remember, we are reorganizing. So, he is, he's getting to work very quickly in choosing his leadership team, and we have advertised those positions internally and externally, and we're really looking for bringing the right people in to support his leadership as we work to enhance North Andover High School. And Chet seems very up for that job.
Same time for High School. Send my congrats to Chet as well, and I thank you to Jim, and I know Stan's here, that you guys serve on the search committee, so thanks for your efforts in that as well. Okay, last one is public comment? Anything?
You want to go?
No. No. Remember, Sam, you only get three minutes. I know. We got the timer. Okay, okay. For the record, could you state your name and your address, please?
Carl, this room 30, and one thing that I wanted to ask you about was the order of the meeting tonight. The local school committee filed BDA rule. One of the things that it states, the very last statement is, following election of officers at its organizational meeting, which this is, I believe, the school committee may proceed into such regular or special business as scheduled on the agenda. So, if you can clear up your thoughts, because I believe that rule's there to ensure that you have all the officers as you do business.
Okay, it was my determination that we were going to do that during a regular session, and that was our first order of business during a regular session.
And that's why with the rule, it just seems that it's clear that even under the special session, you should have all those positions filled.
Noted.
You also asked me to look up the law about...what was that law? Oh, it was the law about the posting of the notice. So, I read the law, and when you read the law, I agree with you completely. Uh-oh, now I'm running out of batteries. But if you dig into the literature deeper, it explains that the alternate site, which the website is in our case, does have to be available. And so, there are multiple situations that are even documented and commented, like the site has to be handicap accessible, which is an interesting thing. But if it's not accessible, then it's not available, and you haven't met the guidelines to start the meeting. So, I didn't know if you were aware, because I assume that they made that designation probably before you were on board.
I'll sit.
Were you aware of it?
I'm aware of it, yes.
Oh, okay.
Thirty seconds, Carl.
Thirty seconds. I won't be able to cover it in 30 seconds, but...
We'll be here on the 27th.
I'd love to see a priority put on documentation within the district. One clear example is the documentation for the high school National Honor Society. The bylaws that are posted state that the GPA is 3.7. The student handbook states that it's 3.8. There's confusion. There's also websites that are being used that are not part of the school system, they're not even linked from the school system, and that goes against the school committee's rules. So, I'm curious to know what you, as the school committee, do when these violations occur.
Okay, thank you.
No reply?
Not right now, thank you. Anyone else for public comment?
Stanley, 343 Stone Creek Road.
Of course it is. I mean, I just, I had to come, David. Of course. If I had to show up. First, I want to extend everybody's congratulations to Ms. Lynch and Ms. Picard for all the hard work they did to get here, and I feel well-served in passing the baton, and I'm sure Mr. Gross